Start the workstation at 3:03. Right here, motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
In favor? Uh, first thing on the discussion list is the back truck. And you guys will see that she has a... Have some pictures of it and...
I guess the main question is doing everything for thousands.
Okay.
But exactly what does it do?
Some sort of sewage. Or water.
That's kind of misleading. It's actually not a backer truck. It's a sewer jet truck.
Oh, sorry.
So it has a hydraulically propelled line that comes out of it, goes down the manholes, and then it pulls itself up the sewer lines and clears all of our lines when they get clogged up or roots in them or grease or anything.
Oh, okay.
So we have to do the... All of our streets on our schedule keep stuff and build nothing in them. And then on the occasion if something does get plugged up, we'll put a different head on it. It'll go and bust through the plug and pull everything out.
It's like a gigantic snake.
It is, yeah. You know, we have a... We have a truck right now. It's a 1981 Ford and it has like 30,000 hours on the deck engine. And we've replaced the pump on it, but it's to a point where it just barely gets us by. And in fact, we had a situation here last week where it didn't get us by. We had to get Butler Drain Service out of Clamath to come and clear a line that we'd been having some trouble with behind Karen's house. And it was a little bit farther than our old truck wanted to pull the line up there and clear it. So, you know, one dose with him, $885. Took him about 25 minutes. So we paid for the trip over and the trip back and a one-hour minimum at $175 an hour, so...
So the one we have now is what year it is?
It's 1981.
Oh, this... And what is the one we're buying then?
Yeah, a big yellow. Yeah, yeah.
Do we buy it used or no?
We bought it used, yeah.
You more than got your money about it, yeah.
So this is a 2006, so that's a lot newer.
Yeah, and it came from a real reputable outfit. And I went out there and actually got to run it, run some sewers with it. Really a good truck.
Now, this says you've got some requests, so is that going to up the price?
You know, it's not. I... It just had a few things, like the driver's seat was kind of ratty. And I said, "Well, it's a really nice truck. It'd be nice to add a decent seat in it." It had a provision for a television camera on the front and on the rear when you're backing in. And whenever you're pulling up to the manhole, it'll now feed off the front instead of the rear. And it had a camera there so you could position yourself. And it had been disabled. They'd taken some parts off of it. So I told them I'd like to have that returned to functional, both front and rear. They said, "No problem." New seat. It had a one-inch hose on it. And they run a lot of bigger sewers, 12-inch and above, so it takes really a lot of water. And it only had 500 feet on the hose, so I asked them to switch it to a three-quarter inch hose and then we'll have about 750 feet of hose on it. So they said that for the asking price, they would do those things and deliver it, so...
And deliver it?
Yeah.
So how do you get over on another trucker?
Uh, they're going to drive it down. Yeah, yeah.
If they break down, the deal's off.
Yeah, we don't give them jack till they give us the truck.
Hope it's not coming from within, okay, here.
Also, I didn't put on there, but I asked them for a little bit of education for the guys because it's not something we're real familiar with. And that was in fact my first experience with that front roll hose and the different stuff, so... And it's a much higher pressure. It's something you really have to be careful with. Ours will build it up.
So whoever drives it up and drives the return vehicle, I guess, so they can do the training when they get here?
Yeah, yeah. They were going to send a guy that was familiar with it and had run that particular truck. So they said they'd devote several hours to our guys.
Great.
Then another thing, I don't know if I put on the list, but we asked for some new jet nozzles because they had robbed all the good nozzles out of it before they put it on the lot for sale. They said they would replace the three main ones that we use, so... New nozzles, new hose, new seat. And... But the truck is super clean and they had all the maintenance records. And I drove it. Seemed... It's a little bit more than some of the trucks I looked at online, but it's got, you know, a quarter of the hours of most of the ones I looked at. For some reason, there's a lot of them in California. And all the ones I looked at down there, you know, had 20,000-plus hours on them. So this one has 52,000 miles on the truck, about 9,000 hours on the deck engine. So a lot of life left in it.
So I only have a question about process. This sounds great and all, but do we... Are we looking at a resolution for a supplemental budget? Because was this part of the budget package?
We have...
Improved budget?
Uh, we still have capital improvement funds in the budget. And we have... There's a couple options. And I don't... I was going to ask, how much will you ever use it on sewer lines? Water lines, you mean, or just...
They'll only be... They'll only be in the sewer department, yeah.
So if we do it, we will have to borrow or make a resolution to borrow from the sewer. Or we could do it another way, which is we have some contingency, but we can do it that way.
So, and as a follow-up to that, I'm just wondering, is there any purchasing policy that we have in place? Like, we got to have sort of, you know, three different bids or two different quotes or something like that on record that says, "Hey, you know..."
For this type of thing, you know, it's kind of unique getting it used with that. We've looked at a couple new ones and we thought about that. That's like worth 300 and something thousand dollars. Very used.
Very minimal, it'd be about $235,000.
Yeah, so we should be good on this.
All right, as long as you guys feel comfortable and we're not in an open session, we can certainly go ahead on some of these. Looks great. Thanks for the update.
I think it's important because we've got to have it working. We can't afford to fall over in Columbus.
We've just been squeaking by for so long and it finally caught us last month.
Do you think in any way this will speed up time too?
Oh, absolutely, yes, yeah.
That's a benefit too.
Well, everybody here saw... Everybody that works here saw we were trying to clear 300 feet of line going up behind these restaurants the other day. And our old truck, we just pounded and pounded. It took, you know, over two hours for two people there. And this truck would have been care enough to get it. Would have been cleared in 15 minutes.
And another thing too, council needs to keep in mind, I talked to Jeff, got it. Some of our equipment down there is old. We are going to have to start replacing them one item at a time. So we might as well just start with this one then.
So this is... Not to cut you off, but this is kind of like what we were talking about with the wells. You know, is that, you know, we need to kind of look at what we have, itemize it or inventory it, and then just kind of come to us with a plan. You know, it should be a department. A needs department should have that for all their equipment that they're using and say, you know, "Looking out five years, this is what I know I'll need to replace." And build your budget accordingly so that we're not here with the, you know, big project that maybe, you know, there won't be funds for. Obviously, you know, have a sewer water fund that's, you know, got some savings in it, but we'll need to treat it south.
I figure we need to really put... I remember we talked... A prioritized system is really a pretty good idea because the departments obviously have some concerns about some levels of their equipment. So we start looking at that and maybe get on some kind of schedule where we put it aside each budgetary thing and then can take care of those things on a...
Yeah, we're going to have to look at street funds.
Sooner than 1981.
Street funds.
Yeah, there's just no income stream anymore for it. We get pretty...
So is it consensus? Because it's on our agenda, right?
Yeah, it's on our agenda or an actual motion, so is that confused?
Yeah, it's on the version of the...
Good job, Tom, getting that.
Oh, thank you.
They're not easy to find, you know, both for use and for quality support. Even if everybody uses them.
We probably won't be able to sell ours, right?
Yeah, we probably could, but I don't know if we'd get enough out of it to be... You know, we might be better off to keep it as a fire suppression vehicle or, you know, when we burn our pile out there, we've got to have something out there. You know, that we wouldn't get $2,000, $1,500 for it, so it may...
A tank gun and everything as far as...
Yeah, it may have more value to us. If we're doing a compaction job, we could use it to water. It's got a, you know, it just doesn't make the pressure to do what it's supposed to do anymore, but it's a good water gun.
But it'd be able to do other kinds of jobs for it, so that's good.
Is that what we used to use to water the plants around that?
That is. Yeah. We're no longer going to use it for that. It's just too bulky and...
Yeah, it's kind of big, that's true.
Guess everybody's a ten-one day.
Okay, let's move on down to public safety surcharge. Is that an update?
I just wanted to give you an update on some statistics stuff. As of right now, where we are, we did this survey on Survey Monkey. And we had several people come in and fill out forms also. But that gives us kind of where we are on our public safety line.
Making sure. These are responding? Only 44 people?
Yeah, which is pretty good. We just did it. Had it out like one or two days or something like that, so we can mail it out. Yeah, so, you know, the responses are coming in on a really pretty positive note.
So the only thing I had a problem with the survey is like, it seemed like there maybe could have been a couple more questions or categories for answers. And it was no... And so some people were wiser than I was when I filled this out. And they said they must not have checked one of the boxes for the price. You know, you can see that 62% picked the lowest number there available. But one of those 62, how many of them possibly would have said, "We don't want any"?
Right, well, that one... I thought they were here to play.
Yeah, some... It looks like only, you know, probably 24 people left at play.
So basically, if it is implemented, you know, so 62% responded, 75, so...
That's not bad for our first little round.
It's too bad, you know, I mean, this is a survey and it's great, you know, and you always think, "Oh, 2020 hindsight" kind of thing. It would have been nice to see these people, some of these people's demographics too, right? So like, maybe demographics is not the right word, but, you know, where are they at salary-wise? Or, you know, just income, family income-wise, you know? Are they in this, you know, poverty level or middle income or...
We can add it, you know, but it's...
Well, no, I mean, this is great. This is great. It just, you know, it doesn't... It doesn't tell the whole story, but it definitely tells you a lot of good information. This is a great update.
I didn't think about that part of it. I was just trying to get it fairly across the board for them.
All the ones that I have seen are... It'd be nice to send out a survey, not asking for money again, but in a year from now, to see if there's improvements in some of the things that are not...
We should. I think we should do that with every...
So where can we improve? How can we improve?
You know, it's a great system now that we have this Survey Monkey thing.
If you have this set up, you know, it's like... Well, okay, we're probably going to find this out at the commissioner's race. But if people are not happy, wouldn't it be nice to know before you got to that vote? I mean, you know, you should have something, some clue ahead of time. And so if we did more of that, maybe we would know... Because we make decisions all the time. We say, "Oh, come to the public meeting. Come and let us know what you..." And then, nobody comes. And then we put it in because nobody complained. And then they... We like a storm.
Yeah, like you did it in secret.
This might be good to have it for one second.
Might give them the opportunity to voice those opinions before something takes place.
That'd be really good because, you know, we wanted to start to kind of do a survey and then we wanted to, you know, have a public meeting where we can discuss it. So I think that's probably our next step within the next...
Well, this has only been out for one week. So, yeah, I mean, wait one or two more weeks and see what other... What additional responses we get.
But it's... It's almost like I could have told most of this. Not all, but... Nice information for our new fire chie... Our new police chief.
Yeah, he's getting his feet wet.
I don't know. It's a start, so we can...
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
That's a good survey.
I think it's a really good about valuable tool for the town if we did it in different areas.
Yeah, I think so too. I think it would be.
So on our agenda for regular sessions is for him and... Has he had a chance to kind of look at current staff? And I mean, this is a question probably for him, but maybe you and he have discussed it. You know, is he thinking it's possible with our, you know, five positions to do some kind of 24-hour coverage in the routine?
Yeah, with five. And then the one thing that I have...
We've never had more than five. And at periods, there has been 24-hour coverage, from my understanding.
But I did have reserves.
Yeah.
But the one thing that I didn't realize too, and I've had all the officers come and talk to me, and I didn't think about this part, but you're on a... Your eight-hour shifts, five days a week. But normally, if you're out there doing your job, you go to court on one of your days off. So they don't technically have two days off in a row. And I didn't realize that. I really didn't realize that. You know, like Mike, he'll get off at, you know, 2:00 to 4:00 in the morning, depending on his shift, go home and is supposed to have a day off, has to go back to court or has to go back to court. You know, and I had not really thought about that part of it. So it's just something to think about.
And if there's no other officer on duty, that leaves things...
It has to be pretty much the arresting officer that's...
Yeah, well, it does because it's like everything else.
That was one thing that I really hadn't considered on the eight-hour shifts. You know, and I still think eight-hour shifts are fun, but I'm just saying from their perspective. And because it's not fair, you know, don't get a day, at least two days off. But I think we'll see some changes that'll be very, very positive.
Well, that's what I'd like to just see, you know, as a new chief comes in and some transitions are made that, you know, he'll take the best and hopefully all the staff will support well. That, you know, this fee that we're talking about may work itself out and that, you know, we start seeing some improvements. And over time, we take this again and say, "Hey, with the new chief and some balance and some..." I mean, obviously, there's been a lot of shakeup with that, you know, new employees and this and that. New chief, you know, even in the last four years, there's been a whole lot of shakeup. So, you know, not having that consistency, you know, creates a lot of the public concern that is only perceived, it may not be real in some cases. In some cases, it may be real just because of being short-handed and stuff over time and new staff and things like that.
But, you know, if you take into account, okay, let's say we implement, like, all the... Or at least whatever, it's still going to take you just about a year to get the revenue built up. You know, if you're going to replace July 1st, you're not going to see the funding stream for a lot of it to get upward.
Do you remember what you said the $5 fee would bring in?
About $70,000. A little bit less because of the people that are in the county. Probably more like $65.
Exactly, $65.
Yeah. So, because, you know, unless we're going to cover the back, those people that are in our water districts or have access to water, that's something that we need to talk about. But, you know, I mean, that's... I know before they weren't allowed to go in some of those areas. They had to stick right because town units kind of agree with that totally because if you have something you can back up, you know, only an officer on could go. I mean, it's public safety. It's not just...
I don't know. That's jurisdictional, state did.
As long as it's a reasonable agreement to the town for a season.
Yeah, because they've been getting religious help from the county. And I don't know how much the state helps because, you know, I don't see a lot of that, but...
How many officers does the state have here now?
Five, no, five.
Don't they have...
Five, let me see.
They have five? My state police officers here?
Did you mean Jermaine call?
Which everybody loves. Whom everybody loves, that decision.
So we're seeing there's probably around 1,200 accounts that this would apply to now. Each month, $5, $7,000.
So really, whether it be... I mean, it is a hardship on some people. And we will deal with that if it's...
Yeah, I mean, we're under the draft where they're just talking about that.
Yes, yes. You know, and we're not ready, but it's just, I wanted to just give you...
No, I think maybe we may be able to have a public meeting to make it open to the public. We're going to talk about public safety.
But would it be kind of nice knowing that that would be late in the budgeting, but...
Well, not really. We're still not there yet because we're still working on... We just wait for the audit now.
Maybe it would coincide with that then too. It'd be kind of a no going into the next year.
Well, we'll have... Our chief will be, you know, a little into it and be able to at least express dreams about what he would like to see.
A what? Either he's a really great liar or he really does like being here and thinking this is a great opportunity.
He really does. He's just... And you guys meet every little while and he is just so excited. I mean, when his wife drove him, so he picked up a car and they just couldn't believe, "You're actually here." Right here, not, you know, so makes it really nice.
You said the difference between what he was used to out there in Clackamas and in the Portland area and what he was seeing here in the community itself and...
Well, he has meetings with the other officers all the time.
All the time, rides around. And meets with me every day. I will continue to do that. So we're getting off of this right there where we're headed.
Under other discussion items, just a question. Someone was asking me today about the $5 that we were using in the water bills to pay for clearing driveways. Are we doing that right now?
One dollar.
One dollar.
Oh, okay, one dollar. Can we double up to $50,000?
Okay, so we're... So we're not doing it right now?
No, we are because we have a... What happened is the fund became down less than $50,000.
Okay, so...
Double up to that.
Okay. Yeah, well, I didn't... And I didn't know the answer to the question of whether or not we had the $50,000 and it's done.
Once it drops down to a certain point...
We have to start to...
Yeah, I understand that, but...
Gets back down to 25,000.
I didn't know where.
Where, whether or not now?
Yeah, so we have to double it back up.
Last year was a heavy year.
Yeah, last year was not a good year. This year was pretty cakewarm.
Pretty easy, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this year.
Essentially, it could take 20 months to build that back up at 1,200 accounts.
Yeah. You don't have something in there that's probably later on. What, how we might intend it, you know, or... It seems to work pretty well.
Seems to be running. I mean, we've had the funds as long as we enact it soon enough. And perhaps with this year being live.
Yeah, it should...
And all of our contractors bailed on us this year. We didn't have any contractors available. Everybody paid off, all had other jobs going. So we're going to have to get some people... Maybe have a contract, you know? Say you're going to be interested in doing it and you pull out, then there's some kind of penalty because you have to have people out of Wim say, "I don't want to do that anymore."
I'm not doing that today, yeah.
You sign a contract to... But anyway, you get out... You slap a big padlock on their equipment.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's how you... That's how you get their attention.
Yeah.
And then there was a question asked at the last meeting and I just wanted to follow up with it on that, the marijuana. And yes, all those retail stores do have to have that ventilation. So just wanted to reaffirm whenever you read that, make sure that...
Yeah, so ventilation, frosted windows or some kind of...
Yeah, they're in the criteria.
Yeah, but I'm going to check. Well, no, I'm not going to check. Somebody's going to check.
Are they getting close?
I think Top Shelf is. And I know that Amsterdam is supposed to be ready, but...
But we still haven't had OLCC down to...
No, they were supposed to be down by the end of March, but obviously not yet. And I know that Top Shelf was working up there last week and the week before quite a bit, so they're ready. So they hope by the end of April. We'll see, you know?
Well, I don't know who the actual owner of the one across the Amsterdam one is, but I should think Top Shelf knows the OLCC pretty...
They will have two, at least, right?
And so maybe then...
I think one has been more equivalent. So... But right now, we haven't heard anything more on it. And I know that David Alonso, he would like to find some property, maybe for the growing side of it. But I don't know. I've heard a couple times that that old lumber site, maybe is selling to somebody to grow. I don't... I really haven't seen it.
Last I heard, they wanted something like $2.2 million for that old lumber site down here. Yeah.
Sure boosts our taxes just to have somebody...
No, that's why nobody's...
Was that one William?
The old lumber site?
Yeah, but wasn't Williams the...
Your own Williams.
No, but now he died.
He died. Maybe somebody is more reasonable now about what prices.
Dick Pointier takes care of it.
You could buy the entire town for $2.4 million. Am I wrong?
My house alone is worth that.
I know.
Mine's just...
Especially with the gold. That adds. Well... Isn't there an issue with the agricultural thing?
It is part agriculture though in our code. It's industrial. So they can grow it on industrial sites.
That's outweighing other communities too.
Is that how it works?
It's like in the county, that was one of the problems.
In the ones that have a group...
Out of county, yes, the agricultural thought.
We haven't gotten here enough.
No, I think Josephine County, that...
By line of sight.
Well, I would really hate to see him buy that. When you know how big that property is and how far back it goes, that all clear down pass into J Street and everything, I mean, it's huge. That whole thing where a growing site...
I don't know that. I mean, it may happen, but one order like that, that would be a lot by, you know, that happens.
And I saw Jerry Chin the other night when I went down to watch Dell's Lake County Examiner bowling team. Is first place, by the way. He was in there and he again reiterated that he'd love to have us come down and tour the place and...
Organize, get a tour, yeah.
So he says, "I'd really like for you guys to do that."
What we should... What do you think?
Extending that invitation.
People ask a lot of money into it.
Well, and at least we'd know something.
You know, in regards to Jerry Chin, I would just like to say that when he first came to our community, he made a vow to better our community with wages. I think he's already done that in a big way, but I think he's got big plans. And I know that it's been tough to break into a new industry especially here in Lake County. It's had its isolation. And so he's moved forward and has spent a lot of money. So I wish him very best and hope that all of those who worked at 42nd Route and what they've gone through up to this point too.
They've been good stewards.
And they're very nice people. They very much are.
And very much supportive of the community. And I agree that if we can figure ways for him to continue to be a viable part of our economic well-being.
Well, I think my thought, I just... It's okay, but, you know, with any of these areas that want to be developed, you know, it's an improvement to the town instead of setting you back. And I have somebody looking at John Colgar's couple people for a couple of different things.
John Colgar's what?
That man thing.
The RV park.
Oh, the RV park.
So one is more of a residential-type facility. One was to put nurseries down there.
Nurseries?
To, yeah. And that would be to grow hemp in the nurseries. And I seriously didn't know hemp was a good... That's not much, you know, but it exists totally.
But isn't there a limit on the amount grown in the states somehow?
I think per parcel, that's the thing is...
Is it per parcel?
Like, if they bought that big parcel where the, the old mill was, or whatever, the two point two, or the dollar parcel, that they would only be limited to a certain amount, so it's, it's an overabundant amount of property because they would have to break it down. They may be able to do that if they break down the different parcels. It's all based on individual parcels.
I need more information on when the man can was...
I have the, I have the document, the document that breaks it down after, which has never been done, as you guys know.
We're supposed to tear out all that stuff.
But difficult to get somebody to, to throw the cost for that one, they said.
There is a promise with EBITROL, and we're gonna be, you know, if Red Rock comes through, we'll be in the same boat. We need something that will house mainly treasurers, because that's what those guys are gonna bring. That's what they get life for in the time period that they're here. They're, you know, they're pretty well-paid employees, and they'll be looking for someplace to park. And so that worked well, and that's why we held on, I think, and didn't, you know, raise it. This mental was through the EBITROL, and now with Red Rock, now, you know...
So they are, they, uh, Diana Walls announced today in Sir Optimist that they closed on the property. So they, Red Rock owns that property now, so they're forging ahead. So I take it that the bonds and all the financial things fell into place.
According to your report, we don't know yet.
To your... It's not a public...
So she made that, uh, public announcement, which she shouldn't have, maybe?
But it's already, it's already the bar over town. And I think formally on Thursday, it'll be announced.
Well, the community service fee will be a great advantage for the town. And it'll take a little while. It, you know, they've got to be in operation. We didn't start this, but...
Did, were we determined in that process what we were gonna be using that money for?
It's, we didn't. No, there was no details in it this time. EBITROL had everything pretty well defined, but we didn't, we didn't define this time, so...
Is that a decision we need to have?
Because we probably didn't really believe it.
It is a discussion that the council would need to make. I mean, it's community service, and the council will have to make that decision.
So they were gonna invest a certain amount?
I'm thinking that, that we were looking at...
Three hundred?
A hun, yeah, it was, it was like a hundred and sixty, seven thousand here, our share.
With three percent every year after that.
Yeah, yeah, it'll, it'll escalate each year, so it's...
Oh, yeah, because the county wants their share of doing something.
Yeah, it's sixty forty, yeah.
No, no. We got, we stand up on the sixty forty, or did we stand up?
Yeah, I think we did.
Yeah, I think we...
We said, "We don't even care."
They wanted to reach...
"We will not agree to anything unless we get this." "We don't care." Well, then kill it. In between your fault or...
Yeah, it was, it was kind of a friction built.
No, I, I have a common agreement on some of that stuff, but...
Well, we need to go through, I mean, and look at it, find truth, because there's, but I, I don't think that it's... The EBITROL did include the ways that we would spend the, the community service fees, which were about the same amount, but...
So you guys will have to define how you want to...
And that maybe gives us a little slush fund for the water, maybe gives us some, uh...
That's where we can look at those priorities, that's what each department deals.
Yeah, because it would be nice to have it, something we decide on a yearly basis, or something where it's going to go and not always to the same place.
Yeah, oh, yeah, for sure.
And, yeah, and as Ray points out, you know, like, we were just talking about the equipment needs. So maybe a certain part of that goes into a special fund for, you know, revamping equipment at some point.
Upgrading equipment?
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause, you know, I was really surprised when I came back, that, I mean, you were driving that uncle where you first tried it, when I got back, or, you know, but it was, or that agree, when I was like, you've been driving that. You know, I mean...
We still have, I see.
Yeah, so now, we're trying to slow it.
I would caution... Let's wait till we know we have it.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, yeah. Yeah, because the EBITROL was kind of...
We were very excited about EBITROL, too, and, but I like that.
Spain had their problems, and you never know what will come up. The EBITROL was, was solid until Spain fell into recession and that, did that project. So you never know what'll happen.
Yeah, I, I think that maybe a workshop to have those discussions for you guys, in order as soon as we know. And I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah.
I think I'll know formally on Thursday, and then April will know formally on Thursday, Friday, so, yeah.
Transfer it to the clam of paper, please, so...
No, they're gonna do it here first.
Well, on Thursday, I meant, so that, after Thursday, so we don't have to wait till the next Wednesday for the local people to...
Oh, you're talking about the Red Rock announcement?
Uh-huh.
Oh, yeah, Kurt was trying to get on that last Friday. Um, I went down to take a picture at the site, but he couldn't actually get ahold of anybody at Red Rock. Because we were just gonna take, I mean, he was just gonna send us the article, and we were gonna run it, because they were gonna put it in the last Sunday's paper. But he still, even, I think we talked to him yesterday, and he still couldn't get ahold of them, so...
Yeah, well, and I don't think they're ready to...
We have to wait until they tell us what it says.
That's what I figured.
Anything else you guys would like to discuss before any discussion period?
I don't know the author, I think. No, that's, I mean, it's all business, so maybe it can be...
We haven't heard anything on the property yet.
Which part?
On age, I mean, what if...
No, we haven't gotten anything back. That's still, we're still waiting. We've got all our paperwork in, but you know how government works sometimes? The higher the government...
Or whatever. Somehow, somehow, yeah, in some ways it doesn't work too fast.
Annexations.
So you just get it from...
Good question.
Yeah, we were talking about that this morning, Jeff and Darryl and I, and, yeah.
We're talking about budgets and needing extra funds. And we talked about what that dollar is now, what we're collecting just before we talked about the islands. It would be created from already agreed upon, over a road.
There was something in that package about that.
Which we haven't actually formally adopted.
Right, just, uh, that's enterprise, enterprise, so, yeah. But, yeah, we talked this morning, I talked with Jeff and Darryl, and, um, we are, since we have confirmation, we want to do it all at once.
Yeah, but this is something we've been talking about for a year and a half. I mean, at least a good year, and it's, you know, a whole tax cycle.
Well, and on that, that was north, where the solar stuff is, we couldn't do some of that. Uh, there was some delays that were not on her site. Company say it was, they were undermining, so, um... Absolutely, that's a lot, that's a lot. And then we had the request, you know, the hunters with that, or, you know, some other areas to come in. I'm the one gentleman that wants to, or has bought, uh, Annie Parker's, that greenhouses. He has to do a swap.
The what?
Somebody's supposedly trying to buy it, and they want it annexed in, but we can't do that, number one, till they buy it. And that's the same with Red Rock, because you can't even start that process until they actually...
The greenhouse on North Side of Sunnysloe, which is outside of where we work.
Right, and that's what they asked to be annexed in, was fire did, but he will have to swap because we have enough land.
I don't want to be waiting around on annexations, on doing everybody at once and trying to include things like that. I mean, that's a, that's a humongous process, next.
No, we're not gonna wait for that. I mean, we're technically just waiting to hear...
Those within the urban growth, that's what, with those requests to apply to them.
Yeah, but the only thing with that piece is they can't annex in, this annex in, they would have to do a swap. Because we have enough property.
Well, we have another avenue, if they get to that point, but we can move forward on that later, perhaps.
And then we should be hearing soon on that friend, Tom Stowe, you know?
Well, now that Red Rock owns that property, I mean, if that's the true announcement we can make, then I would say, now we really should be moving on those, because, I mean, let's get them in. You know, I know the town, the officials, that thing, I mean, they've already signed off on, um, Caton's Road as well. And it's like, and they're getting calls when there was snow and saying, "Hey, how come, how come the towns..."
Because they haven't finished, like, they, they don't over yet, and so we will...
We better sign off on this.
Probably by next week, we will start moving on those, you know, getting everything done, because I know they're working on it, so...
Oh, a good start to...
Yeah.
Thank you.
One of the things, too, since we, if, if we have to start providing all of the needs of those people that will come in for construction, on the Kogar property, I, I think we need to look closely at our contract with him on the way that it was done, because I would feel this long, as long as it's been, there's a lot of, I don't know, I'm sure it's decayed in, in a lot of ways, and so we don't want to let him operate something that's unsafe.
It's gotten weedy, I would say. I don't think property's been destroyed, like...
Do you like their clients, or, that's all I've...
Removed.
Some of it's been removed.
Water has been, water's been shut off for a long time, yeah.
Well, just to make sure it's safe, I don't know if there's something that the town should do to, you know, before allowing them to reopen, because that was something that it was, it should already be closed down, and so...
And, and something that I was gonna ask our attorney about, the debt that he owes the town right now.
Perhaps we could use the...
Something until he gets those debts paid off.
Well, and, and right now, um, you know, my son-in-law was interested in that property one time, and, and so I checked the account. The water bill's in, it's in arrears with the tax base, but it takes another two years before they...
More close.
More close. But at the time I asked, which was last fall, it was forty-six thousand in back taxes.
Oh, yeah.
So if somebody buys it for forty-six thousand, we're not gonna see any of that. They buy it for more than they can.
But, you know, that was a concern I had, because we'll never get this debt paid off.
So that's something I think we ought to have a good discussion about, with some examples from other communities, what they're doing with water bills, sewer bills, all this kind of stuff, where, you know, somebody moves out, the house is sitting vacant, and it gets sold, and then you got these new buyers coming in going, "Oh, I gotta pay what?" You know, it's like...
Because our existing water ordinance says it goes with states of the house, and, you know, so we've had that fight, you know, with certain people, and it actually said that, and I have been talking, well, I was talking to them about helping to upgrade that water sewer ordinances and stuff, and it's not talking now, I'm going to upgrade, at least the water. Because that needs to be clarified, one way or the other, and, you know, those are old ordinances, so I need to get that.
Because I, I wonder if it's causing a problem, too, with just, we've got a lot of vacant houses who could be sold, and people were hesitant to buy it because of all these back bills, and they're like... And not knowing that they won't, you know, hook up water and, and won't be into it for maybe one or two years as they slowly remodel, and they're like, "Gotta pay this full bill, go, and I know I'm not gonna use the water."
But another thing that was happening that should have happened, when, um, when they go to Ameritile and try to clear that side, they know not check here to see about this bill. They go to the county, they check taxes, they check all that sort of thing. But that should then be checked, okay, there's three thousand dollars here in water usage. That should come right off the top.
I think most of the realtors have learned that.
Well, but hopefully, private ones have not yet. And I know that we had one sold, and they didn't, that Ameritile didn't check, and it has a back, you know. But what I want to do is upgrade those, our handout, and then we'll come before you for discussion and changes.
I think that's an excellent idea. We've had some pretty, pretty sad cases of people coming in. One, remember one woman inherited a property, and the, the water bill on the sewer was enormous. I mean, the property wasn't even worth that. And so, because when somebody leaves that, the water is shut off, but it's still billed at a certain minimum rate every month, and it should, it shut off, it should be off, people, done. And at least that makes sense to me, but...
Well, and the reason I will, you know, logically tell you why it stays on. And, and when you have a system like your water or your sewers like that in the car, you always have to do continued maintenance, and we depend on that, or making sure we can pay our bond, or, you know, our debt, we make, I mean, you have to guarantee and pay those debts. And that's why it's been, stays, you know, continued, you know, I mean, because you have to pay your debt. And then when somebody demands water for a fire or whatever, we have to have that capacity. And so they're paying for that capacity, you know, and that's why...
Available.
Yeah, that's why we have done it, or most towns would, that way, so...
But we could adjust it so that there's maybe a minimum, a minimum, really low fee that keeps us current, wasn't it, but doesn't, yeah, you know?
But it almost ought to be a cap, though, you know, especially when you know, I mean, it's been sitting vacant all these years. I, I would think logically that you should go in and say, "Look, it bills five thousand bucks. I'd rather you cut that line and install me a new line, because it's gonna be cheaper for you to install me a new line." And then I know I'm gonna have a nice new line, you know, and so if you put a cap, then you'd say, "Okay, we'll take a cap or just below what a new line would cost you," so that, unless we want to say, maybe we'll, we'd like to install new lines.
After the property or the, the services set idle for somebody?
Yeah, and that's a good way, possibly, when we talk about this, is getting the new leaders put in, those ones that have been, you know, just, okay...
Great.
My help pay for that. So I think that when we have these discussions, and we've got to start, because we have to start.
We have to get that done. I agree. That's how...
Yeah, so we'll do that.
It's gonna be interesting, you know, if Red Rock or Red Rock comes in, that, you know, you're gonna see a lot of these vacant houses actually turn over pretty quickly, because there's gonna be a housing issue.
I know, and I did talk to Business Oregon a little bit about that, but that's the process, is to pick wherever to get, you know, somebody, a builder or let alone, you know, contractor, you know, somebody, yeah.
There was one other item I wanted, and I don't know how we go about doing it. Up on North Sixth Street, there's a tree up there, it's just pretty much hollowed out. And if we get a big strong wind, I don't know if it's...
Is it not our property?
It, I don't know, if it's not, I don't think it's on our property. But somehow, that tree is a dangerous tree.
And when she says property, you're meaning right of way. Is it possibly in the right of way, like, right on the sidewalk area?
Maybe.
Because if it is...
Has the homeowner been contacted?
You're talking about the one that part of it fell down last winter?
Probably.
Yeah, it's, it's a homeowner, it's a homeowner's responsibility.
Yeah, has the homeowner been contacted?
I don't know.
I'm not sure what's...
I just noticed that, you know...
We need some, you need to give them an ad, an address, and we need to do some follow-up.
I'll get the address on there.
Is there a neighboring property it could follow them?
Pardon?
Is there a neighboring property it could follow them?
Oh, yeah.
North Six, probably.
Uh, next run across the street, where they can take down power lines.
Well, and that's it, that could be a nuisance, I mean, you know, it's a hazard, so we need to know if there's a presence of, you know, when it's in a water...
Would the power company cut out, at least top it or something?
Yeah, probably fall under a nuisance order.
I don't, yeah, people that's living in that, I'll take that for a resident, I'll worry.
Because we have another property that people are complaining about, that is, is on right property between the two that we're talking about. That's between the two of them, but it's something, yeah, so, anyway, guys. We can follow up then, yeah, for Six, please.
Run across the street?
It's between, uh, H and J, on North Sixth.
Yeah.
That would down the block from...
Definitely the property owner.
And we were, and I was looking at the guy who was starting to...
In Duett, just east of Ed Duett's house.
Cool. So is this over?
I'll take mine.
So he's buying it? Can you see the tree?
Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
Okay, we'll adjourn the work session at, uh, three fifty-two.